Oh, good, thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Still very good.
Good morning. Sit on the side. The bar is right on. Good morning. How are you?
Well, I'm good.
I'm here. I'm in better condition than Franklin.
Uh-uh.
You didn't hear about our Mr. Franklin?
Uh-uh.
He and his course had a difference of opinion.
Oh, hi.
And Franklin lost.
I've had those different opinions before.
He doesn't appreciate us, make him appreciate us. And then laugh or do it all.
No.
That hurts in the ribs?
Yeah. Please stand with the judge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution of Nations, founded by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
What's wrong with this side room? We're afraid Franklin's catching. What? We're afraid Franklin's catching.
Yeah.
No, he caught it from me.
Well, that's a side where they keep all of the prisoners. I just was sitting in court while they were doing that. Where they're at.
Today, what's wrong? Fourth day of November, Broadwater County Commission meeting. After lots and lots of thought and thinking, maybe we really aren't being fair to the people of Broadwater County, I think we need to follow Robert's rules closer. It has more structure and for everybody's sake, I think it's really, really important to do that. So we'll start each meeting with public comment and your entire, we'll start with three minutes, see how that works. We may have to increase it and then we'll do it again at the end. But there will be no questions when other people are here. If you have questions, be sure and write them down and you'll be able to ask at public comment time. So I think it's only being fair to the people. Question, John.
Yes, John Rice, my name. Elaine, what you're doing right now, our primary law of the land is the Constitution of the United States. And this rules, as you're talking, these authoritarian rules, they're another set of laws. So to enforce them, you're conflicting your constitutional responsibilities as we-
Thank you, John.
Can't be restrained by that. And if you do, there is action will be taken against it because it's out of order.
No, it's not out of order.
Well, then you tell me how the authoritarian law got ahead of the Constitution and I'll listen.
Thank you. You're done.
And you shutting down?
Yes, I did and I will again.
Well, and then-
We're not being fair to the people of Broadwater County by chit-chat, chit-chat all the time throughout the meetings.
That's what we're supposed to be.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Don't argue with me or I'll ask you to leave. Okay. We're to hear, the people that come to us need a fair chance to be able to tell us what's on their mind that are on the agenda and to take care of the county business. We'll take questions before and we'll take questions afterwards, but not during that time. Yes, Ms. Grabley, I've been doing lots of reading. Montana Title II dash three dash one oh three, public participation, Governor, this is just a small paragraph. Governor to ensure guidelines are adopted. Each agency, Montana law describes agency as municipality, commissions, bureaus, boards, whatever. Each agency shall develop procedures for permitting and encouraging the public to participate in agency decisions that are of interest to the public. And this well, you'll be able to say before and afterwards, not during, given that person that's sitting there. But then we won't be able to ask a question concerning any information- No, you will. -until the decision's been made. No, that's not true.
Then the person's gone.
If the person's- Enough, we're going on. Excuse me, one more thing. Under Title VII dash one dash forty-one forty-two, it also states, each governing body, committee, board, authority, et cetera, the Montana Constitution of Title II, Chapter Three, shall develop procedures for permitting and encouraging the public to participate in decisions. Thank you. I was at legislature for more years than I care to admit to and that's how they did it. They, the person spoke, but there was never any question until after everybody was done speaking. You're more than welcome to look at legislative stuff and that's exactly how it is. Last question, John.
Well, what you're just now, see you, once again, you jumped over the bridge. State, what you were talking about in the state statutory law, it's not our constitutional county. Our rights come from this constitutional county and it can't be superseded or usurped by the state or federal statutory laws.
Thank you.
It's totally a different set of laws and you're applying this law to cover this law, your mandates that you cover our county constitutional form of government.
Thank you.
Mandated.
Bill Kearns.
Bill Kearns, I just want to make a comment on the PILF money coming up as you look at it and ask that you fund, there's a lot of good projects out there and so that's what PILF money is used for. I hope that you wouldn't, you should have a reserve, but don't get too carry away. I, as far as I understand, PILF money has come in for years, will probably continue to come in and so I would encourage you to help all those worthwhile projects that I've heard about in the last month or so.
Thank you. One more question, has Broadwater County received the third quarter report from MBA for the show blow? No, but I will check on that at noon today if we can answer that further. Okay, I guess we can do some now.
Can we start with this in adhering to Cheryl's request? And that is to approve the official procedures. In fact, if you do read the law, we should actually be voting not to abide by a civility clause in Robert's Rules of Order, but in the interest of addressing some of those concerns, I would like to move that we adopt the open meetings policy and it speaks to exactly what you just brought up, Elaine.
Okay, I want to read it out loud so everybody understands. It's the open meetings policy. It is the policy of Broadwater County Commission that meetings of official boards shall be open to the public. Broadwater County recognizes the opportunity for the public to observe the actions and deliberations of the public agencies in a safe, civil environment is important to free society. To ensure county business is conducted in an efficient and equitable civil manner, Broadwater County meetings will be adhered to to Robert's Rules of Order. Broadwater County also recognizes the rights of privacy, constitutionality guaranteed is fundamental to the well-being of both individual and society. Therefore, all meetings of the official Broadwater County business shall be open to the public except when the discussion or deliberations relate to the matter of individual privacy or litigation strategy. Public comment, civil public comment is welcome and encouraged. Each citizen who wishes to speak on any matter relevant to the county business will be allotted three minutes at the beginning of every official meeting. A timer will be used to maintain equity. Public hearing, public hearings will allow for more time to comment on relevant issues that appear to the agenda. All civil and relevant comments will be considered regardless of the mode in which they are delivered, in person, by phone, email, text, and et cetera. Agenda, any item to be voted on must be noticed on the agenda. In order for a matter to be brought forward, the presiding officer should be notified no later than the Monday of the week preceding the following week meeting date and dates or the request may be delayed to a subsequent week. The request to be on the agenda should also include the topic and details of the issue to be considered. If the topic is a new item or presentation, a copy of the presentation must be submitted with a general agenda request. The preceding officer shall make the final decision. Final agenda shall be reviewed prior to submitting. Agendas will be submitted for publication in the local newspaper of record. If a meeting is called or an agenda changed, a notice will be posted at least forty-eight hours prior in three public places, the courthouse, the post office, and the school. Meetings, the presiding officer may recognize a member of the viewing public as an informational or expert witness at their discussion party. If a member of the public wishes to comment on an agenda item, they must present their request to the chair prior to the meeting, abide by the presiding officer's decision, post-revoked comment, remain civil, and have up to three minutes to speak. All such comments will be directed to the presiding officer, never to another citizen, guest, employee, or visiting expert. Thoughts, Franklin?
Basically, that's a good guideline to use, but I still think we're shutting the public out too much. I mean, if there's something they want to talk about when the item's being discussed, that's the time it should be before we're voting this out. And in this case, it, you know, throws out, they got to be on the agenda and stuff like that. Some of those guidelines are fine there, but I don't think all of them.
Those were handed out last week and I got no suggested edits or discussion on any of them. But those are not mine. That came from, this is the material that I went to get, the wording for that. Ken Weaver has a whole chapter on civil meetings wording, Montana code annotated, local government board handbook, county leadership handbook from NICO, and then a couple of handouts in between. It's gotten pasted from other entities, other county commissions that conduct public meetings. So it is already vetted and law from those other entities and we have to do something to maintain the civility and the safety of our employees and our citizens. And this actually opens up, participation does not mean free for all. This, this policy opens up participation to people who are working, people who are raising families right now, who cannot be here. They still deserve a voice. These meetings are not just for the few who want to show up and, you know, don't have a responsibility, haven't done the homework, don't understand the ramifications or the legal pieces of what we deal with. And that's where the expert requirement comes in. So I just think it actually opens up our meetings even more to our citizens.
Thank you. Did you make a motion?
I already did and I would be more than happy to remake that motion.
Franklin, thoughts?
I don't know what you're talking about, stability and safety. I sure have felt threatened in these meetings because I've attended and were to, were attended before I was here in this position. So I just-
Yes. That one paragraph that says we're allowed to observe, Montana law says that we're to be encouraged and assisted in participating. Okay, but let me tell you, the legislature, you do not get to talk and all the presentations are going on, not at all. You're more than welcome to get online and take a look. Those meetings are all recorded and they're available for the public to look at. The comment period is afterwards, so.
Manager, this is a book written by Ken Weaver and Paul LaChapelle from the local government center. It's called Governing Montana, The Grassroots. And it was given to us at MICO. And Ken Weaver was a county commissioner, I believe, and the executive director of MICO for many years. There's a whole chapter and it talks about what participation is by the public with these meetings, specifically county commissioner meetings. The reason that the agenda is noticed a week beforehand is so that people can see what's coming up. They can call any one of us, they can email us, they can stop us in the grocery store, they can provide their comments, they can ask questions. It's our jobs as the three elected officials and the three responsible officials for this county to do our homework, to solicit comment the week prior to the meeting. If an agenda item requires public participation, then we have a public hearing in which we do hear from the public for a set amount of time upon a particular agenda item. None of these items should require any kind of public debate at this point today.
Thank you. Are you going to second that or not?
No.
I will. It's moved to the second agenda that we adopt the open meetings policy. Is Broadwater County Commissioner on, favor me say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Good morning, Dana, come on up.
Dana, can anybody speak?
Not right now. How are you?
Good. Don't have a lot going on right now. We're just getting some snow wings on drapers, making sure we're ready to go just in case here.
It's snow scum?
If we put them on, maybe it won't.
All right, get them on.
I don't know.
Snow's hard to catch, you know.
Get it?
Inhaler too.
See, at Winston, it's hard to get in. I mean, the guys are up there right now. I was up there just a little bit ago, just got back, but putting a little bit of gravel on that pull creek road up above. Jeff Happner's on over into Darryl Bombs. I've got some rocky points up there and I'm just trying to cover them up so we don't tear the plows up when we're running up.
They didn't get any snow.
Just buried this guy. Got her, did some graveling over here on Little Cottonwood from where Mike Duster used to live. Back to the north there, up to that corner there, it always got real ruddy in there, I believe, and I'm not sure that's where John, can't remember his last name, the fellow there wrecked his four wheeler last year.
Was it Ken that was killed?
Yeah. Back up there somewhere, but it always rusts down through there, always has, but we haul some rock up and let that take care of it and then down along towards South Cottonwood. There's a couple spots in along shindles down through them dips that, you know, water comes down through heavy and rust up, so we'll let those take care of the stuff, so. Got a call from, after I sent that letter to Jim Davies, he passed it on to where he needs to pass it on to a lead Jeff Ebert on the Meg out here possibly next year. Well, I got a call from Jim Friday and he said, the big fellow upstairs says no. So he gave me a name of the Bozeman Director and said, if you see, you know, once construction starts, if we see some major traffic anywhere on these roads, you know, to get in contact with him and see what they can do there. From my gathering, it's, it's, it's all state money that's taking care of that, those next two sections. And the reason we got it out here is because there was federal money involved. So other than that, I mean, I don't know what, much you guys want to go ahead and push it, you know?
Where would you be putting this Meg, Clyde?
Well, I told them four thirty-seven. And I didn't want to go with the others because I thought it might be too much. I did talk to Jim, I called Jim and talked to him after we discussed it and he said he'll be lucky to get four thirty-seven. So as it is, it's lucky to get anything.
Well, and actually, four thirty-seven is a state highway.
It is a state highway. The only problem is it's got to be maintained because it's dirt. So it just-
Oh, they're, they're federal money because that's why they're going to toss irrigation canals now, they're going to, they're going to move them over some because of the depth. They said that being federal money had to be, that's the reason for moving them, so anyway.
With the highway project?
On the, yeah, on this-
See, and that's what I, it seems like a big project to not have any-
Yeah.
But I, that's what they told me, so I, other than that, I don't know.
I think we just as well just let it go and when they start needing that traffic again, we just step in there and raise that and say, here's what you-
Either that or we can, we can just put a road close sign up that says, close local traffic only on each end.
Can we do that legally?
Yes.
Okay.
We can do that.
I like the idea.
When the time comes, it's young.
Yeah. But that's going to be, now Laura and I worked on being the other day, and they're not even going to let that, they were supposed to let that in January, now they're not going to let it till June. And then once June comes, once they let it, then it's going to take a month or so to get things, you know, noticed proceeding and all this stuff. And then they're going to go do some irrigation work, a lot of that irrigation crossing stuff prior to that. Got them next fall, end of the winter there somewhere.
After the water goes off, fifteen.
Yeah, and then they'll get started deep into it like 2015, which is probably March.
Before the water comes back in.
Well, they should have that irrigation stuff done before, before that and then they can just proceed on, on the road itself.
My understanding, that's Broadwater Missouri Canal?
No, it's a toss irrigation.
Oh, yeah, toss.
Well, there's one crossing on Broadwater Missouri.
Yeah, that's down by, right about the start of the project, isn't it?
Yeah.
This way of a little, three thousand there.
That's the only place that Broadwater Missouri crosses.
Yeah, and they'll have to have that in. And then they'll have to have them pipes that are coming across the highway.
Yeah, we've got two crossings, toss irrigation does, plus three crossings, one is just the open ditch and two pipelines.
Yeah. Now, the one is down on, we got one pipe coming across Toss and down and we got one, is it down on Muddy Lane, down by Muddy Lane, or is it down on Low Mountain?
Low Mountain.
Okay. And then we've got, what's the one that's down there on Hosvelt? Does it come across there?
That's the one that comes down Low Mountain. Farther up on Hosvelt Lane, that's the open canal there.
Oh, okay, the one that goes down through-
It goes all the way down to the end.
Towards Spring Creek.
Yeah.
Anyway, I asked them where we're at with that.
How long do they think the project will take?
Oh, they should have a, make a start of it. I mean, they'll be done with that one.
From their original plans, they're not even going to bid it, it's been done. Now they're going to have it, just going to be bid at that time. But once they get going, it should go pretty good, I think.
Oh, I think so.
One thing, if they're not going to start it for a while, which we get hurt on Thursday, it might be an opportunity for us to readdress the requests we made at that time. There'd be a new budget, you know, things nationally should be hopefully a little bit more civil and ironed out. There might be some opportunities down the road.
Now, you can do the best.
Absolutely doesn't hurt.
Have you heard any more on what's going on down in Goose Bay or, I mean, are they-
We, the county is happy to take the docks, ownership of the docks, which is not related to roads at all, except that there really won't be any reason for anybody to go down there other than the public campgrounds that are not Goose Bay owned. Oh, yeah, they will, but it should cut down on some of that traffic.
Yeah, might, but I was just kind of wondering, are, have you heard, are they going to come in and build a bunch of stuff then or? Okay, so we need to make sure we keep up on that.
Yeah. It's still kind of in the talk, but I don't know what you're going to do.
I think they have some plans drawn out. Some sketches.
Make sure that goes in the plans.
That's right.
If not, if not all of at least that first mile down to the corner.
Yes.
So I feel they spend two hundred thousand or five hundred, what they're going to spend out there, they sure take care of their road.
Yeah, they'll spend that.
Exactly.
Turbo, yeah, you bet.
Yeah, they, yeah, because it's their traffic.
And we'll just have to get vocal when the time comes.
Yeah.
One thing we may want to do too is ask for a traffic counter.
They've got traffic data on that, though. They've got, VOR's got traffic counters on it right now. Back where we've got enough.
Excellent, we need that when we come to request.
And I think they've got one right down there next to that corner that they, they keep all the time and collect the data off of that, so Sean Dwyer ought to be able to get us that data in.
Excellent.
Have you seen the plans for it all, Dan?
No, I haven't.
You might get ahold of Sean.
Oh, he's up.
There's three different plans, so you might even want to submit your opinion of which one is the best one to go with.
Okay, is there, there's a comment, period? Is that going right now?
I'm not sure when it started or when it ends.
Okay.
I think the First Amendment, but I'm sure there'll be another one out with construction art.
Anyway, we got done, we ended up blading, got all them roads out that are bladed and finished that. She's starting to freeze up pretty tight right now, so.
Is it already?
Yeah. But we're investing in this month, we have to, I know we got to try to get an animal road and we got to try to get pond and cactus into it, so.
The only one I've heard on is Crowe, Crowe broke, that's trade is broken there. I think it's probably that piece in there where you put some of that clay and then the gravel. I just heard that it was rougher than that, that's the only thing.
Okay, I haven't heard anything about it.
It's okay. Might check that before I get up.
A lot of houses use that, don't they?
Oh, yeah, floor service, that's usually pretty heavy.
Yeah. I don't know why, once you get up on the porch, you have to drive the road, so.
Where you can?
No.
The gates are closed?
No, it's just, if you're on a nice ridge, you just kind of want to stay out of it. Other than that, that's about it.
Franklin?
That's the only one I heard.
No.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Dana.
All right. Wonderful afternoon.
You too. We have seven minutes, October twenty-eighth.
What's that?
Minutes for October twenty-eighth.
Very well moved, we approved those minutes, we did receive them last week.
Ten seconds. Move being seconded to approve minute October twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, Palm Beers, a half.
Aye.
Close the scene. Motion paid. Close the same, motion paid. We got a report on the Joint Land Use Study, which is J-LOSE over you. You're into those meetings, would you give us a little brief?
Yeah, I put that in the minutes, uh, that's actually the twenty-three points that they are looking for public comment on. And there is a meeting Wednesday night, six o'clock, at the library. Uh, the Joint Land Use Study is a joint study between Broadwater County, Townsend, Lewis and Clark County, and Helena, uh, with National Guard. And the reason it was started, I think we're the twenty-four, the reason it was started is some facilities around the country have been doing their operations. And as development started to encroach on them, uh, different things they were doing at night, they couldn't do with the, uh, night vision goggles because were too many lights from too many homes and businesses, that kind of thing. So they were actually forced to close. What this is, is a planning document looking forward so that any of those issues that are small problems now that could become larger problems are addressed, so that there is some kind of a structure and a plan for how to work together. Um, the focus is, of course, Fort Harrison and the Limestone Hills. This is separate of the, of the withdrawal. Um, and it's a study, so at this point, what they're looking for is input from the public. And so that will be Wednesday night, six o'clock, uh, at the library.
Thank you. Any questions about it, Franklin?
No, this is, I'm concerned about is that they're just keep moving out farther, farther from that training area like they, you left. It's too early for that one time with that.
I would suggest maybe, um, that we try to attend the meeting Wednesday night and see if they can shed some light on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to make that, I don't know, but, uh...
Depends on what the rims do.
That's really the concern to me, is like, start spreading that all over.
Those ladies said that most of it was gonna be near Fort Harrison, that's what we did.
Right, but remember that, that, all of that one map, that maybe we weren't supposed to see that, but remember, I showed you how it went all, that, that big blue area. And they kept that map, nothing more has been said about that, so, that's what my idea, that's in the back of their minds, you know?
So I think we need to check into it and stay on top of it. This is suspension of the two thousand fourteen boundary and annexation survey.
Do you want your hand?
It's a suspension of the two thousand fourteen boundary and annexation survey.
That one down there on the, this is, oh, this is the same on that, uh... This is pertaining to the yard, is it? So here they're talking about annexation survey. Really, the, the annexation survey, so they can, again, it's, there's a lot, how much of a percent they're, they got their mind made up on some of that stuff, but... It's a, it might be that, uh, the actually, the public probably should, because they might comment on that too.
Is there a date on there?
No, I didn't see the date, I just saw the place where it goes to.
Contact information?
Yeah, right to Orson D.C.
And it doesn't give a date at all?
No, it doesn't, I mean, it's, uh, it's first place. That's just when their year runs, isn't it? I think it might have been fiscal year two fourteen, so... I would imagine, if anybody wants to get anything in there, they...
It's my understanding that federal's fiscal year runs from October first to September thirtieth. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, thirty, yeah. So this would be in fourteen, I think, but, but if anybody wanted to comment on that, I, I will be getting more information, I'm sure, but...
A letter from M.B.A.C. Broadwater County Commissioners, Dear Elaine, Laura, and Franklin, enclosed are the Montana Business Assistance Connection Incorporated Quarterly Reports for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. For the Broadwater County Revolving Loan Fund to include loan activity detail, accrued interest analysis, and aging report. I have also included, ari, the statement of financial position for the fund for the third quarter and the year to date. The aging report reflects one loan debt legacy, which is PFM manufacturing. The borrower has been slow the last few months, however, feels things are starting to pick up and has promised to bring this loan current by the end of November. This was one new loan, pardon me, I'm sorry, there was one new loan during the quarter to Brian and Janine Mooney in the amount of a hundred and four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars to assist them in relocating their business. Townsend Marine, and one existing loan was paid in full during the quarter in the amount of two sixty-eight thousand three hundred dollars by Hawn Ranch and Feed Supply due to a change of ownership. Please review the enclosed and let me know if you have questions, and give their phone number and how to get hold of them. I hope things are going well and appreciate your support of the economic and community development activities.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, I have more copies if the other commissioners...
That would be great.
I'm Chris Choe, I'm the new director of the Montana Business Assistance Connection.
Hi, thank you. And we do have an appointment with, uh, M.B.A.C. at ten forty-five.
Right.
That discusses.
We'll set that aside until... Department of Interior, Bureau of Reclamation. Required work on the Silos Recreation Area bathrooms, basiles, Canyon Ferry Reservoir, Helena, Montana. Dear Commissioners, thank you for your letter received at the Broadwater Canyon Ferry Division Office on October, August fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. Requesting the Bureau of Reclamation sharing the cost for routine maintenance activities at the Silos Recreation Area. We have reviewed the letter and after careful consideration, have determined that this is not a viable option at this time. As you may be aware, the federal government is facing an extended period of budget reductions. State and local governments are likely faced with the same type of budget adjustments as well. In light of these budgetary constraints, we must examine expenditures closely and make many difficult decisions. In the case of your latest request, we must seek the guidance of the management agreement between Broadwater County and Reclamation, Article Number Five of the agreement states. The county may use existing reclamation structures or facilities located in the Silos Recreation Area, which reclamation determines are available and suitable for public recreation purposes. The county shall maintain all such structures and facilities used by, under the terms of this agreement, in reasonable repair, provided that the county shall under no obligation to restore, pardon me, or replace any such structures or facilities that which may be destroyed by fire or other causes without negligence of the county or its authorized permise, or contractors, its agents, assignees, licensees, and employees. The activity outlined in your request appear to be routine maintenance activities that are identified as county responsibility in the agreement. The facilities do not require replacements and have not destroyed by fire or other cause. Painting, minor repairs, rebuffing of all facilities, maintenance activities typically occur as a result of normal usage. Therefore, reclamation feels that the activities referred to in your request constitutes facility maintenance as identified in the agreement and would look to the county to fund the completion of this work in accordance with the management agreement. If you have any further questions, please feel free to contact me. We appreciate the opportunity to view your request. Sean Bryant, Assistant.
Just basically, we're required to take care of the names, basically, for yours.
I think it's kind of a thanks, but no thanks. Okay, here's an email for the transfer station, addressed to Laura, Tom, Laura, myself, and Franklin. And it was C.C. to Tom and with Austin and other members of that board. Here's a little information for Phillips County on the cost to build a new metal building. Three hundred forty-one thousand five hundred and eight project, seventy dollars per square foot. This was a publicly bid project and one builder provided a bid.
Well, oh, it says they built a building with three hundred forty thousand, doesn't it, say?
Department of Transportation. It is requested that Broadwater County contact this office at the phone number listed below to update M.D.T. files regarding repair work or replacement of bridges in the county, structures twenty feet or longer, or to request subsequent inspection. Current inspections of additional bridges are underway and reports will follow. For any questions or comments, I can be reached at the Bureau office.
And this, as you remember, is done annually on various bridges, just to make sure they're safe enough to code.
Here's the one there by Deep Creek. Facilities.
Oh, is that the same letter we had here a week or two ago?
Thank you.
I remember that picture, we had like that one, wasn't it? So what did, were they just telling us that they made an inspection, or was it just, oh, okay. I think I should let them do the inspection, they already know, right? It's just a...
I didn't notice Dana has C.C. on that, if he does, then we should get him a coffee.
That's right.
And see if he has any bridges he'd like to request that they look at as well. I'm guessing he probably was, but I don't remember seeing it.
Well, it says county file, which is this here.
I'll put that cross out so we can make sure that Dave gets a copy of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Please. And here's another from J-LOSE. Your input matters, you're invited to a public forum in regard, forum regarding planning around Limestone Hills Training Area. It will be held Wednesday, November sixth, six o'clock, in the county library. And this is the second public workshop. Okay, we'll start there. Come on up, gentlemen, please.
Take a little while, let's see, come across to the commission, I appreciate. I'll try to dig out some cards here. Uh, to say, know who I am and how to get in touch with me.
Thank you.
And of course, everybody here knows Brian, so...
Thank you.
Easy introduction. So what we've given you here, well, a little bit about myself, I just moved up here recently, about three months ago, from Kansas City, Missouri. But actually, I lived outside of Kansas, Miss, Kansas City in a little farming town of a population of about five hundred, including the cats and dogs. And, uh, so I've been there for quite a while, but that's been my home base. Last year, I was actually working for the U.S. Army in Afghanistan, doing economic development in southern Afghanistan and Kandahar, but I worked also in the Middle East. But anyway, so, I'm here...
Were you in a safe spot then?
Say again?
Were you in a safe spot then?
Uh, well...
As safe as they get.
Well, we had twenty combat actions a day, imagine an area like Broadwater County, and, uh, so, uh, unfortunately, we lost maybe three or four soldiers a month, U.S. soldiers. Where I was at was the birthplace of the Taliban, and, uh, but it was a good service, the U.S. soldiers and Marines were doing an outstanding job. So for me, it was a good experience and proud to serve, and I was with the Eighty-Second Airport Division, uh. But anyway, so here I am. And we really appreciate working with Broadwater County, as you know, Brian is out here quite a bit. And, uh, we receive a small, well, about ten to twelve percent of our money, funding, comes from the U.S. Economic Development Administration to be an economic development planning district for Broadwater County, Lewis and Clark County, and Mark County. And so we're actively engaged in, in all of them. And we also run these revolving loan funds for each one of the counties and also for the city of Helena.
Would you say, tell where, where that money actually comes from, so the public can understand?
Well, I understand that originally, many, many, many years ago, Broadwater County received a grant from the United States Economic Development Administration to fund a particular business at that time. And the way a revolving loan fund works is, I believe that amount was a little over four hundred thousand dollars, a long time ago, nineteen eighty-eight, something like that. And, um, so the funds are lent out to the business and then they pay back, hopefully, the loans. And then that loan fund can develop, uh, over time. And so we, those funds, but then also like the funds that we get to do, uh, planning for the Economic Development Administration and some other agencies, uh, that's where it all gets mixed together in a project, but we keep the money separate all, all the time. So many years ago, the, uh, the different counties at different times, they made a contract with the Montana Business Assistance Connection to manage the funds. And, uh, so that's what we do. And, uh, the Broadwater County funds, for example, they stay in Broadwater County. Um, and we actively, uh, try to, um, fund different businesses. What happens most of the time is, I know from personal experience working, we have a loan committee of several banks that are involved that review applications. And M.B.A.C. normally does a loan that the banks would not do, it's a little bit too risky for them. Right now, a lot of the banks, um, they don't wanna give a loan unless there's clear real estate collateral involved. And, uh, so we, we do those kinds of loans. And the other thing that happens is some of the loans, there's some here in Broadwater County that are a bit risky, and we spend a lot of time with, uh, the borrower to help them look through their financial issues, and, uh, I know, uh, in Broadwater County, one of the... And I know in Broadwater County, one or some in particular, that we've spent many, many, many different days, full days, out here, working with them and trying to work through their financial situation so they can keep their business viable.
So do you help them with their budget, or?
Yeah. Last year, or to this year earlier, we were directly engaged in counseling of businesses. But when it becomes a borrower, we become much more involved with them in advising them on how to improve their business or how to rearrange their finances so that they could remain viable. And so what's, what's happened is our, the performance level of loans has gone up substantially for Montana Business Connection. We have a lot of older loans, not from here, that were really in trouble. So, yeah, we do become actively involved with them. They know us really close in personal, more than your personal bank or whatever be involved with. So it's a real pleasure. And we, we think about, a lot about how we could further fund and expand economic development and business development in Broadwater County, Mark County, Lewis and Clark. So I don't know if you had any specific questions about the report that we've given you here about the...
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I can use this one.
Well, I, I want that one in the file.
Okay.
Is this your financial report, or just, or just for the business you've done here in the county?
Just for Broadwater County.
Can you give us some examples, and I don't know if you can do this or not, of successful loans?
Well, there, there have been several, I can't, because I'm new, I can't speak with perfect knowledge about everything that's happening in Broadwater County. But I know for Mback in particular, we've had some loans that were really successful. The company pays off the loan and they're still operating, they create jobs. That's one of the things that, when we're looking at doing a loan, we consider how many jobs are going to be created by the company and what they're doing. Some of them have been strong, some of them are just really easy. And I think the ones in Broadwater County right now are, are that, some of it's really easy, and things are going very, very well. And some others require some more work. Is that it?
It does. And Mr. Miller out here with PFM, does he look like he's starting to pick up business?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
He did have a big contract, I thought, with Boeing.
Well, he was up, yeah, with Lockheed Martin.
Okay.
Yeah. And I can tell you from personal experience, that what they were talking about with Lockheed Martin is something that there was, in a lot of use in Afghanistan, we're using a lot of robotic operations to counter LED, I mean, improbi, explosive devices, IEDs. And they were still doing, the United States Army and contractors like Lockheed Martin, were still doing a lot of field testing of those operations. It's a lot more difficult than people really realize of detecting the IEDs. And so I don't think that contract has come to full fruition. And I don't know into the future how that might play out. A lot of it depends upon the company itself and working with the different potential contractors. But then, you know, as you all know, US forces are drawing down out of Afghanistan next year. And there might be continued support for the national, the Afghanistan National Army, because they've taken heavy casualties, usually about a hundred men a week. And one of the areas they're very weak in is with IED detections, that's where most of the loss of life has been. So the potential could still be, as the United States changes its mission to doing more training in Afghanistan of the Afghan National Army, there might still be opportunities for the company, but I don't know for sure.
And does he still feel like by the end of November, he'll be able to make his payment? Very good, thank you. And everybody else is current?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any that are in the process of applying?
Not right now.
Actually, Mark's got one tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay.
A small business here in town. He's coming in to talk to him about his business plan and potentially some bridge financing.
Very good.
One of the things we'd like to, to do is to, a little bit better marketing, in a way. A lot of businesses don't know that we're there as a potential resource. We started a television show, which I think might hit the cable out here a little bit, to kind of let people know more about the Montana Business Connection as a source of financing. Typically, we work with the banks and we usually do a cooperative arrangement where the banks go to a certain level, they feel comfortable to risk, but then we take the uncomfortable part of risk for them. And we do part money, like in Townsend Bank here, in the CDs, as part of our loan reserves.
What do you charge for interest?
It varies. Anywhere from one percent up to seven percent usually. We do have a lot of loans that are out there at two percent, which is far below what the commercial lenders are providing.
That's very good. That's a shot in the arm for those businesses.
Yeah, it is. It's just not enough people know about us. And so I would appreciate you too, if you have entrepreneurs or businesses in the area that they kind of comment to you that we're looking for some kind of financing, tell them to contact us. And again, we will work with the banks. And even if it's a really, well, we will work with the banks to collaborate with them.
Aren't you in competition with the banks, aren't you?
We do deals that the banks don't want to do. And so that's why a lot of times we team with the banks. A lot of our loans are, they normally involve a bank. Again, the bank will take the amount of risk they're comfortable with, and then we take the amount that they're not comfortable with. And sometimes we do do loans without the banks, because the banks wouldn't touch the loan.
So you're subsidizing, I think you can go ahead and take these loans in?
Say again.
In other words, you're subsidizing, so to take these high-risk loans, why, if the banks won't take them, how come you guys are so willing to take them?
Well, we look at it, the, because of the financial collapse in two thousand nine, the quote-unquote Great Recession, the banks and the regulations that they were hit with have really made them very, very cautious. And so they will normally require a substantial amount of real estate as collateral. And we've, we've actually talked with the banks, because there's sometimes there's a company that has no real estate. We have computer service companies, we have some software companies, they don't have any real estate, and the banks won't touch them, even though it's a good deal. And actually, it's a good deal for the community in the sense of creating jobs and raising incomes in the area. So banks, I think, a long time ago, used to do those kinds of loans. Now, a lot of that stuff has gone to private investors or venture capitalists, but even then, they only look at exceptionally good deals. But I think that's what the difference is, is we're taking, we're looking at the people involved with a potential loan, a business, what their character is, what their background has been. And as opposed to the bank, we'll say, well, how much real estate do you own, and can we get a clear title to it if you default? So we look at that too, but not as hard as the banks do.
What's your money source, and if you do this kind of stuff?
Well, we've been fairly successful making a loan, and then people pay it back, and then we get the interest. And that allows us to continue to build the revolving loan fund and to make loans.
Do you ever take existing businesses that are hurting and need some way to finance better?
We know that for sure. We know that for sure. And we're trying to develop some other systems of providing funding. You know, one of the other potential areas is a pure equity investment. It's not a loan. It's actually like taking stock in a company. And so we're looking at how to do that. I've done that before in other states, and it was fairly, I should say fairly successful, very successful, where a newer company, they might not have revenues right now, they might not have them for a year, but they have a very good business idea, a business plan, and so you actually make an investment in it. And I am working very closely with the US Small Business Administration, and the Governor's Office, and also private investors about making some of those funds. Right now, there's only one in existence in Montana. There's another one, it's in Missoula, or Kalispel. And there's another one that's being developed in Bozeman. But compared to like California, there's hundreds of them, these investment funds. And so we're looking at other ways of funding the business. There's a real need, but like I said, some, some of the businesses or the entrepreneurs, they don't have a revenue stream yet to actually pay a loan. So we're looking at those other alternative sources.
No cash flow?
Say again?
No cash flow?
Yeah, they just don't have cash flow, not yet. They, you know, they have great prospects. There's one company that we've been working with, they have absolutely no real estate whatsoever, but they have a wonderful internet computer program, and they have customers all around the world, and they have prospects for very good contracts, but they don't own any real, they don't own any real estate. So the banks aren't interested in funding them.
Questions?
The revolving loan fund is revolving. Started off, as I understand, with Broadwater Printing years ago with the four hundred thousand.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah, that you mentioned. How much has come into Broadwater County from that initial four hundred thousand dollars, do you know, to help area businesses?
Well, right now, we have about three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in the fund, and total. And then we have about available, is around a hundred and seventy thousand, it's on here in the report, available for loans right now. Does that answer your question, or?
No, overall, big picture? When it first started, it was four hundred thousand. How much has come into and been paid back and come into and been paid back thirty years?
I can find out, find that out for you and give it back to you.
Okay.
But I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm a new guy.
Sure, that'd be a good number to know.
Yeah.
Sure. Financial statement size, what do you have, just in the county here? Could that be available to us?
Oh, yeah, sure. Well, we, we're in a unique relationship, because this is actually a Broadwater County. Normally, we would never tell somebody, a bank will not tell you who their loan customers are, is what I'm getting at. It's confidential information. And so we can provide that for y'all, because we're under contract with you for that. But the other funds that we have here, like in Townsend Bank, we'd be glad to share, because that's our own information, we don't care about, or we do care, but, but the, I don't know if that's answering the question, but we can, we can give you that, and we can give you the, the financial statements for my organization. That's, that's, we're a nonprofit corporation, so automatically that information is available to the public. Be glad to do that.
They'd like to have that.
Sure. Chris, could you also speak to the structure of Mback? I think there's some, some thoughts out there that this is unique to Broadwater County. Can you speak to how the law sets up the relationship and how economic development organizations are set up throughout the state?
Well, the Montana Business Connection actually had predecessors, and it actually goes back to the nineteen eighties when it was started, but...
What was it known as then?
It was called Gateway. And then before Gateway, it was, part of it was the Helena Area Economic Development Association, but that's going way back. And so it's a nonprofit corporation. And what we did was to apply for funds from the US Economic Development Administration. And USEDA establishes economic development districts throughout the whole United States. And it provides us a technical support grant for them to be like an economic development advocate or organization to support a county or a community. They do this across the whole United States. And as I said, right now, that's roughly about fourteen percent of our revenues that the US Economic Development Administration grants. But in Montana Business Connection, we have revolving loan funds. We do have grants from other organizations, like the Montana Department of Commerce, for community development. And then also, we, something that could probably be more utilizable in Broadwater County, with the Department of Environmental Quality, we have a loan program where a homeowner can get energy improvement loans for their house, and that's pretty active for us right now. We have over two hundred loans in that.
Just in Broadwater County?
No, no, totally, totally. But we could do more in Broadwater County, I'm sure. And then, then we have the RLFs. And so that's all kind of compiled together into, oh, we also have investors in Montana Business Connection, or people that, entities we provide value services to, like Broadwater County, or Mark County, or Lewis and Clark County, or the city of Helena. But the investors and those people who want our services, they pay into that. So all that money is kind of compiled together, and then you do the technical assistance to different areas or to the businesses. And it varies. In Broadwater County, the issues, the economic development issues in Broadwater County are very different than in Lewis and Clark, and they're very different than in Mark County. You know, Mark County, I'm working extensively there, they're, they have a very, very low income level compared to the nation. I mean, far lower than Broadwater County, and I hardly believe that sometimes, but... And they have significant infrastructure problems, so we're working really closely with them. The good thing there is they have a new copper mine that's potentially moving in that will hire a total of about three hundred people. And we're working really closely with that company in terms of infrastructure, what community facilities might be available as the law, as the mine comes online. But in Lewis and Clark County, what's really different there is they have a very large professional staff, in the same way as the city of Helena. And so we do only certain kinds of projects in that area. And when we do those, we sometimes can tap into funds that nobody else can for like environmental mitigation. So there is no real one law that governs these activities. It's more the development of relationships at the local level that need the services. And like I said, we're a nonprofit corporation, and we were designated by EDA, you know, to service a particular area, like I described, so...
Is there not a legal structure, though, that determines that your board has to have certain members on it, specifically from counties, from cities?
That's not a law, but that's our bylaws.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's our bylaws. And in our, we're a corporation, and we have corporate bylaws. And so, yes, it does require, or in a bylaws, it's not a legal requirement, or statutory requirement, I should say, that we have a membership of the board, that's the local governments that we serve, and then also other people at large that become members and then also part of a board of directors to operate or to oversee the operation. So there's, there's, we're reviewing that right now, we have a governance committee, and you're modifying it a little bit to make it a little bit simpler of having a board of directors, which each, with each one of the local governments served engaged, but then also a few other officers that are elected by the membership. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
So, you know, we do, Brian and I, we think an awful lot about Broadwater County and the city of Townsend, right? What can we do to help in the economic development and increase income? That's really what our primary goal is. And I have a lot of experience in other places, in rural areas, really rural areas, like in Afghanistan, but... But I think there's a lot of things that are potential. But we also really need to know from you all and the citizens in Broadwater County about what they think are really important goals for MBACK to try to help in economic development. We call that the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, SEDS. You might have heard that acronym. But we're actively engaged in that now and asking for input from official bodies like yours, but then also the citizens themselves. And Brian is kind of orchestrating that for Broadwater County. I'm kind of orchestrating it for Mar County. We're both, and other staff are working on it, Lewis and Clark County. But we actively want the citizens' input about what they think are the right things for us to be doing. In general, I've been in economic development for thirty years. I think you have some significant assets here, like the lake and its related tourism kind of development that I think could be enhanced. I worked in the state of Florida where tourism is a big deal. And I learned a lot of the tricks of the trade, if you will. And so I would like to discuss with you all about some of that into the future. But there might be other things here, especially since I'm new, that you know of. That would be important things for us to pay attention to.
Do you know of any, Franklin?
No. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, an organization as small as ours, we, we can't influence commodity prices. I mean, we're not going to change the price of cow calf, I mean, beef prices or grain prices. But can we find those small businesses that can take advantage of the niche markets within that? And then, I mean, those are some of the things that we're definitely looking at. As I mean, wheat dairy is an example. We're not going to be able to drive milk prices up or down. But are there things that we can do to make them more efficient so their bottom line is that much better?
One of the things that we, we do do, that, what I'm really focused on is exports, is that if you really want to increase income in a particular area, if people sell outside of the area, it brings dollars into the, into your area. And that's something I'm really focused on. So I've been working really closely with the federal and the state export agencies. And we do make contact with foreign buyers. Brian orchestrated a visit with a gentleman from South Korea that has been continuing on in terms of buying different kind of commodities from this region. And I've been doing the same thing relative to wheat and some other areas. We have delegation in from Italy just recently. We were talking about what products were available for sale out of this region. So that's, that's one area that I think we can affect. We can affect commodity prices, but we can encourage buyers, that are international buyers, to look at Montana. You know, at the Senator Vaucluse's Economic Development Summit, a few months, well, I guess it's a month and a half ago, I was there. And, you know, they had the ambassadors from different countries there talking about. And I was with a company there, and we were making a relationship to improve their international sales. So that's, that's something I don't think there's enough support for, for local companies. You know, how do I go ahead and sell a product overseas? And as I said, working with the Export-Import Bank of the United States, I've been in contact with them about how do you, how a company here can get funding, like a loan, if they know that they're going to have a business or a sales opportunity outside of the area. So that's the, the one area that hopefully it'll have, it'll have some impact. I know for sure, what Brian did earlier with the South Korea commodities buyer, it's kind of played itself out. Where there's several different companies in the area that are interested now in linking up and selling to South Korea and into Southeast Asia.
What kind of commodities would they be looking at in Italy?
Well, it was really interesting. What they were interested in were companies that were involved with recycled wastes. And they were looking for technologies and also products to buy. And it was a large recycler in Italy. And they were just really interested in finding companies that could provide recycled products. We worked a little bit with that. But then also, they were interested in technologies related to that.
Interesting.
That was about a week, weeks ago. Last week, I was in Dubai, in the United Arab Emirates, and met with a gentleman from Saudi Arabia that was very interested in Montana wheat. They cannot produce any of their own food, and they're actively looking, they're actively buying commodities, wheat.
They can't produce any of their own food?
They've stopped doing it completely. It's too expensive to try to do it. And so they're interested in buying it. And they're interested in cutting out the middle people so they can go directly to whoever the actual producer is to buy it. So I actually referred that, some of that information over to Montana Wheat.
That gives the buyer more money than the producer any.
So if you have any other questions?
Has MBACK any business activity with Paradigm Communications since July of ten?
I don't know.
Are you talking Bill Finer?
Yeah. You haven't, Hank, you're not connected with Bill Finer?
Not really, except being the DES coordinator for the, for the county. So within our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, we talk about the DES plans that were put together, but we have no direct work with him.
Are you suggesting that we should do something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm just, I'm the new guy, so I'm just trying to figure out what's what, that's all.
Do you have cards? Because I'm sure there's some people here in the public that would love to be able to know how to get ahold of you.
Sure, sure. I'll just leave them right here.
Okay. That'd be fine. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Very quick.
Very quickly, excuse me. The status of the third order report for the document.
Never should be a public address any guest that comes to our meetings.
That is with downstairs right now.
That was delivered this morning?
I would assume it was put in the mail at the end of the quarter, which was the third Thursday.
I've been asking every Monday, and he didn't have it.
Because it wasn't the end of the quarter, so...
The quarter, I mean...
Ends, and then we have the month...
It's September.
Right, and then we have the month of October to finish the report. And it was sent out at the same time theirs was.
We got a letter here from DNRC. You relay any closed or two original planning grant agreements for signature. Please have both signed, including your federal tax ID number or indicated, and return both to me for execution by the Department of Natural Resources and Congress Conservation. If fully executed copy will be returned to you when completed. You may call me, and here's the phone number, Pam Smith, Program Specialist. And this is on the Deep Creek Restoration Plan.
That's for DES, is that right?
No. No, it's from Department of Natural Resources.
Hang on, is there some information for us, or just whatever?
Well, I'm going to... We're the project sponsor with DNRC. They have a FEMA grant of thirty-seven thousand and a DNRC project planning grant of fifty thousand. And contracted professional services is eighty-seven thousand. So balances. We can pick this back up, come on up.
Hill Street first, is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm hoping I'm going about this the right way with you. I'm going to give you a visual. I don't know if you recall, this Hill Street and Bridge Street, there was a discrepancy with this intersection here. This is where Hill Street comes down, and this is where the abandoned Bridge Street lies. So there was a discrepancy with this area right here, whether or not the ownership of this, sorry. Whether or not ownership of this northerly, northerly portion of Bridge Street, when it was abandoned, belonged with the southerly owner, as it's shown here on Track D, or if it belonged actually with Hill Street. So we've had a lot of discussions about this. Several books have been in and talked to the commission about this. You asked me to go to Susan Swinley and get her opinion. And I have that, and I've made copies for each of you. There you are. Thank you. And I have one for Ann, too, if she wants to get it up, great. So I could go over each, all of this, if you'd like, her entire opinion, if that's something you're interested in, or I can go over some of the areas that I piloted, whichever you think is in your best interest.
I think we need to know the whole story.
Sure, so do you want me just to read the whole thing aloud here, just her whole response? Okay. So again, my question was posed to her. Where does the ownership of this northerly portion of the abandoned Bridge Street, where does the ownership lie? And I provided her with all of the deeds. I did make you copies of those because I didn't think that was necessary, but I have all of the deeds in here. So her response is dated October fourth, two thousand thirteen. Hi, Nicole, I want to capture all of the facts that I know. Please review them carefully to ensure that I have the facts correct. The county attorney and commission must consider whether or not asserting a claim with regard to the discrepancies discussed in this memo are in the public's best interest, considering the delay in making any such claim. Retrasment survey nine six six four one, which is this one here, has been of record since two thousand and one. If the commission or county attorney desires further discussion, please let me know. An issue has arisen as to the accuracy of retracement survey nine six six four one with regard to Track D, as it depicts the property southerly and adjacent to Hill Street and that portion of land formerly identified as Bridge Street in the townsite of Toston. Based upon the facts and a review of the law, one could conclude that at least two issues of discrepancy may be present with regard to Track D of retracement survey nine six six four one. Number one, retracement survey nine six six four one depicts Bridge Street as sixty feet in width. However, Resolution eighty-one dash eight describes the street as being seventy feet wide. And Resolution eighty-one dash eight was the commission's resolution to close the Bridge Street, just for your reference.
And that's when it said over seventy feet, then?
Correct, on the resolution, correct. And number two, the area southerly and adjacent to Hill Street did not convey to the owners of the real property south of Bridge Street at the time of abandonment. Analysis and facts. In Resolution eighty-one dash eight adopted on June twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty-one, the Broadwater County Commission resolved as follows that Bridge Street be closed from the west side of Lot Six in Block Two through the east side of Lot One, Block One, Townsite of Townsend, Toston, I apologize. This action was in response to a petition for closure submitted by Wilbur Greaves and adjoining landowner submitted in April of nineteen eighty-one. The commission also had on record a May second, nineteen fifty-five petition to close the alley known as Bridge Street in Block One from Block Six to a point where the alley, Bridge Street, intersects the Broadwater, Missouri Viewers Canal and Hill Street between Blocks One and Two, with said street being seventy feet wide and same being a dead-end street. In nineteen eighty-one, the commission accepted the report of the Board of Views, and no protests were filed. The commission acknowledged that neither the nineteen fifty-five nor the nineteen eighty-one petitions had been acted upon when they passed Resolution eighty-one dash eight. It does not appear that the commission may not have abided by all of the statutory requirements in nineteen eighty-one. While I did not request the nineteen eighty-one law from the Montana Law Library, the nineteen ninety-five law indicates that there were no changes between nineteen forty-seven and nineteen ninety-five. Based upon this, I can assume that this law was applicable in nineteen eighty-one. And so she cites MCA seven dash fourteen dash two six one six, Procedure to Discontinue Street. The county commissioners may discontinue a street or alley or any part thereof in an incorporated town or townsite upon the petition in writing of all owners of lots on the street or alley, if it can be done without detriment to the public interest. Number two, where the street or alley is to be closed for school purposes, a petition signed by seventy-five percent of the lot owners on the whole street or alley to be closed will be required. Number three, before acting upon such petition, a notice must be published or posted in three public places stating when such petition will be acted on and what street or alley or part thereof is asked to be vacated. Such notice must be published in a newspaper or posted at least one week before the petition is acted on. Resolution eighty-one dash eight states that one person, Wilbur Greaves, signed the nineteen eighty-one petition. However, Mr. Greaves did not appear to be the only owner along Bridge Street in nineteen eighty-one. On July seventeen, nineteen eighty-one, the Toston Methodist Church quit claims to Wilbur Greaves the following property. The northerly one-half of vacated Bridge Street lines southerly and adjacent to Lot Four and Block Two of Townsite of Toston, which street was duly vacated by the Board of County Commissioners of Broadwater County, Montana, in Book sixty-one, page four thirty-seven. On July second, nineteen eighty-one, Julia L. Johnson quit claim to Wilbur Greaves the following property. The northerly one-half of vacated Bridge Street lines southerly and adjacent to Lots One and Two of Block Two of Townsite of Toston, which street was duly vacated by the Board of County Commissioners of Broadwater County, Montana, Book sixty-one, page four fifty-one. Additionally, the record does not indicate that the commissioners did not follow MCA seventy-six three three oh five, which required a vacation of flats and utility easements. One, any flat prepared and recorded as provided in the section may be, may be vacated either in whole or in part as provided by Section seven five two five oh one, seven five two five oh two, seven fourteen two six one six of Item One and Two, seven fourteen two six one seven, seven fourteen four one one four of Item One and Two, and seven dash fourteen dash four one one five. Upon vacation, the governing body or the district court as provided in seven dash five dash two five oh two shall determine to which properties the title to the streets and alleys of the vacated portions must revert. The governing body or the district court as provided in Section seven five dash two five oh two shall take into consideration the previous plating, the manner in which the right-of-way was originally dedicated, granted, or conveyed, the reasons stated in the petition requesting the vacation, the parties requesting the vacation, and any agreements between the adjacent property owners regarding the use of the vacated area. The title to the streets and alleys of the vacated portions may revert to one or more of the owners of the properties within the platted area adjacent to the vacated portions. Two, however, when any pole line, pipeline, or any other public or private facility is located in a vacated street or alley at the time of the reservation of the title to the vacated street or alley, the owner of the public or private utility facility has an easement over the vacated land to continue the operation and maintenance of the public utility facility. The subsequent actions of some of the owners could lead one to believe that if the commission abandoned Bridge Street, then the commission divided ownership of Bridge Street, granting one half to the owner on the south and one half to the owners on the north. In May of nineteen ninety-five, Wilbur Greaves transferred to the Wilbur Greaves Invocable Trust the following property. The northerly one-half of vacated Bridge Street lines southerly and adjacent to Lot Four in Block Two of Townsite of Toston, which street was duly vacated by the Board of County Commissioners of Broadwater County, Montana. This action was filed in Book sixty-four, page four thirty-seven, and Book sixty-one, page four fifty-one. The same land had been transferred to Greaves by the Methodist Church. In March of nineteen ninety-five, Wilbur and Alice Greaves transferred to the Wilbur Greaves Invocable Trust the following property. The southerly forty-four feet of Lots Five and Six in Block Two of the Townsite of Toston, as said lots and blocks are described on the official plaid of record, Book thirty-two, page three fifty-one. In May, on May fifteenth, two thousand and one, retracement survey nine six six four one was recorded. May seventeenth, two thousand and one, Jeannie Greaves Mitchell, assigned for interest in the land, described in retracement survey nine six six four one, to William and Marilyn Lane, Notice of Purchasers' Interest, Book fifty-six, page six twenty-one. Additional to consider is that Resolution eighty-one dash eight uses the term "close" rather than "abandon." The commission does have the authority to close a street. And she cites MCA seven dash fourteen dash two one two seven, Temporary Limitation or Prohibition of Traffic. Each Board of County Commissioners may, in its discretion, limit or forbid temporarily any traffic or class of traffic on the county roads or any part thereof when it is necessary in order to... when it is necessary in order to preserve or repair such roads. However, the nineteen eighty-one action of the commission doesn't appear to be in response to a request to close temporarily Bridge Street to traffic. The minutes might provide more insight on this possibility. Based upon the facts as provided, it is unlikely that the commission intended to close rather than abandon Bridge Street. So in conclusion, whether or not the commission properly followed the procedures to abandon Bridge Street is in question. The subsequent actions of the property owners indicates a belief of abandonment. The commission has not taken any action contrary to that belief in more than thirty years. It appears that retracement survey nine six six four one is accurate as to the width of Bridge Street and the ownership of the portion of Bridge Street southerly and adjacent to Hill Street. It is up to the commission, after advice from the county attorney, as to what action, if any, to take with regard to these inaccuracies. So basically, it seems as if it's up to the commission to decide whether or not these deeds were done accurately. I would think you wouldn't want to go back and amend deeds that have been recorded because that sets a pretty awful precedent.
And that's back thirty years.
Exactly.
The only thing the decisionary reason on Bridge Street, did all the ownership go to... Actually, it went to the both sides, right?
Well, you know, in, in her conclusion here, she states... And I'm just going to read verbatim here in her conclusion. It appears that retracement survey nine six six four one, which is this survey, is accurate as to the width of Bridge Street and the ownership of the portion of Bridge Street southerly and adjacent to Hill Street.
Southerly, doesn't say anything about the word?
Southerly and adjacent.
Okay, but it's saying...
But doesn't say anything necessarily about that northern part. So really, you know, I think she's leaving it up to the commission to decide if this is something that you want to, to pursue. But she does suggest, uh... You know, that you, that you confer with the county attorney on this as well. So I apologize if I brought you no information to make your job any easier.
It looks like it should be surveyed again to find out where Hill Street ends, right?
To have a, but to have another survey done, and I've talked with Bernadette about this as well because it was shot or surveying that I had done the survey in the first place and what it would take to resurvey this. And Bernadette's here, but basically she said they would simply resurvey the deeds. And if the deeds show the same thing, you're going to end up with the same picture. So it most likely is going to reflect back to these deeds where this, you know, this property was given. You know, these shouldn't have been created, but they were. Maybe this shouldn't have been done, but it was, per the deeds. Because theoretically and historically, when crap, when a road is closed, they need in the middle. This doesn't become a whole new parcel as it has in the case of this is track E, this is track C.
But those were deeded over.
But they, but they also shouldn't have been deeded over. And so maybe the, the inaccuracy or the problem is lying with the deeds and not so much the survey because the survey is most likely accurate or an accurate reflection of the deeds that were recorded. So if the deeds are recorded, maybe...
But at this point, no matter what, it, it doesn't say the northern part of Bridge Street, does it?
The, the northern, no. She, she doesn't, she doesn't say anything about that northern.
Right, that's, that's what the whole question was about, was, was that far fair?
Was this sixty, sixty wide by thirty deep? So the sixty by thirty piece right here is really the one that's been in question. And, uh, you know, I, I emailed her and talked about it. So I know she's very clear on what my question was. You know, is, is this correct? Is this correct according to the deeds in the survey, the way that it is? You know, and so basically, you know, she, she does say the southerly and adjacent to Hill Street.
Still talking about the southern side, yeah. So the part we all, everyone I know about, she didn't make any decision on.
Unless she was thinking adjacent, as in here, southerly and adjacent. So everything in the southerly, everything's south and adjacent of Hill Street, which would be that sixty by sixty piece.
Sixty by thirty.
But, but, but if she's saying southerly and adjacent, this entire piece right here is southerly and adjacent. I'm not trying to put words into her mouth of what she's speaking of, but... So basically, you know, she's, it's up to the commission to decide if this is...